I will try and make it speak. We can always follow up with me, you know, after the meeting if you have questions about it, but I can't wait until the next finance meeting. Building permits and fees, because you can see we're 70% of the year. We're a little behind on plumbing permits, but it's relatively low number to start with. And we're a little ahead of schedule on building permits, so that's all looking solid. In terms of parking, based on the conversations we've had, we've readjusted this back to tracking the Front Street municipal lots separately. So you will see that we are at $345,000 a year to date, which is basically on track for our budget. You can see that our budget was actually significantly lower than what the actual came in at. So it's 86% of budget, but 75% of last year, and 75% of the year through. So it looks about right. It is, I did go back and look to see where we were, because I know you're going to talk about parking today, where we were versus a year ago. It's about $20,000 higher through September than it was a year ago, but that actually all happened in the first quarter of 2024. So since the first quarter of 2024, we've been trending about 20 grand higher than the year before. So this doesn't necessarily have anything to do with any changes that were made recently.
And I'm sorry, that's parking all over, that's Front Street.
No, that's just Front Street. Yep, so on and off street parking is the first thing, that's the meters. So you can see we're at 68% there. The Front Street municipal lot is what we just talked about. We had, once the council made the change, we'd stopped tracking it against that because we were not obviously clearly to us what was actually happening there. Once we realized that it is going to stay a separate revenue line item, we went back and adjusted it back to make sure that we're tracking it, so that we'll have a good way of seeing what, if any, impact, any changes that you make are on that particular lot. Any of the other parkings and permits would be in the next line, which is parking and other permits. And then parking tickets were at 67%. So overall, roughly coming in at, at where we want to be. Maybe a little late. Sales, mortgage, and lodging tax, we still only have two out of the four quarters of sales tax. So we're at 1.081, which is the 44% a year ago. Again, I checked last year, and we were actually 1.1 million through the first two payments of 2023. So we're seeing a slight decrease there, not substantial though. But I did want to, I added in this thing, which is from the New York State. They issued sales tax across the state. This is just a very small chunk of it, because they do every single month, and they do all of the counties. This just shows the statewide total, which is up 1.9%, that's that bottom line there. And you can see that the Capitol District, the first dark line up there is up 2.9%, but unfortunately you can see that Columbia County is actually down 2.5% versus a year ago. So we're obviously going to want to keep a close eye on that, both for 2024 and for 2025 budgeting. I do know that the last two quarters that were reported, so July and August, were actually down more than 2.5%, so it's higher in the beginning of the year. But I believe August, July and August were down 3.9% and 4.1% or something like that on a month-to-month basis versus the month a year ago.
Sweet, I'm sorry, we get all of our sales tax numbers monthly and quarterly?
Quarterly. And we don't get the, so we'll get the, we'll get one more in this fiscal year. We don't get the last one for this fiscal year to the beginning of next fiscal year, and then we have to charge it back. So we don't actually know until like February, March of next fiscal year how we did in this fiscal year.
Do we know why Columbia County was down? No idea?
No, I mean, you know, they, they base it on distribution. So if you flip over the page, because I did this two-sided. So we did finally complete our 2023 fiscal audits, so I just wanted to share that information with you. So what you can see is that we had, and I just obviously did the general fund on the attachment. You'll see some of the other funded information and the entire audit, as well as the required communication are posted to the city website under the Treasury section of the documents, if you want to go through the whole thing. But highlights for the general fund are, we had just under $14 million in revenue, just over $13 million in expenditures. So the difference between those two is 772. However, how it's reported in the financial savings is slightly different than what we can do in our system, because there's this category called other financing sources and other financing unit uses. So in the KBS system, the other financing sources are included under revenues, and the other financing uses are included under expenditures. But here they're broken up separately, so you can see even the revenue has exceeded expenditures by about 770,000. We had an additional revenue of 89,000, which was the band premium for the money that we borrowed. But we also had 844,000 dollars of operating transfers out. So net, our entire gain in 2023 was $16,000, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. It's considerably lower, which you'll see on the next page, than it's been, but we still have a healthy fund balance, and so it's not necessarily problematic. Ideally, you want to be relatively close between revenues and expenditures, assuming that all else is, is being held stable. So in terms of the fund balance, I put the audited fund balance, but I also put what the AFR, which is the annual financial report that we have to file with OSCV, because there's two noticeable differences between how New York State wants us to report things and how the auditors do. And that's mainly the difference between non-spendable and unassigned fund balance. So you can see in the audit, we only have $49,000 of non-spendable. So that's basically stuff you can't touch. Because it's reserved, it's, it's, I'm trying to not use those financial legal terms like assigned or reserved, because those actually have technical meanings. It is money that is set aside, that, that cannot be used for anything at all, basically. Restricted fund balance, this is exactly what sounds like it's restricted. So those are any kind of capital reserves that we have, where we set aside money and say, okay, we're going to set aside this money for, you know, to help offset the cost of X or Y, or, you know, any kind of capital projects that we want to set up money ahead of time, like we did for Ferry Street Bridge, for example. Those would be in restricted. Assigned, and see, there's just under half a million there. Assigned breaks down into two things, designated for subsequent years expenditures. That's basically the amount that we use in budget to balance budget. So in the 2024 budget, we had $741,000 worth of fund balance used to balance between revenues and expenditures. That's obviously a budgetary number, it never comes in as an actual like that. What you ultimately see is what we saw on this first chart here, which is ultimately what we're grabbing is just expenditures at the end of the day. And the other two is basically what we call encumbrances. So, you know, when we committed, so in 2023, we committed about $688,000 worth of expenditures that didn't actually hit fiscal 2023, because it's like, you know, you order something in November, but you don't receive it until April. It's too late to charge the expenditure back, so it becomes set aside as assigned other, and then we do a budget amendment to move those monies into the budget at the beginning of the year. And then unassigned is what generally people think of as, when, when people generally talk about fund balance, they're pretty much all assigned, because everything is set. And that's where you can see the big difference. So you can see in non-spendable in the audits, 49,000. According to New York State, it's 2.7 million. And that directly impacts the unassigned. So according to the audit, we have $3.9 million in unassigned fund balance. According to your state, we only have 1.3. And the big difference there is because OSC requires us, when we have inter-fund loans, so basically every time you prove something and you say, hey, the general fund's going to lend this capital fund $600,000, and they'll pay it back, and we get the grant reimbursements, or when we borrow money out of the market, they require anything that is over more than one fiscal year to be categorized as non-spendable, because frankly, we don't know when the general fund's going to get it back. It's all dependent on when we get the grants, or when we go and borrow, and, you know, with the DRI, we had a mortgage law that was sitting around for three years that we didn't get, so. But that's what the big swing is there. So they're both right. The AFR is right from a short-term perspective, like from a more like a from a cash flow perspective, because obviously the more the general fund loans out, the less cash we have, and we are starting to see the impact of that, because we've had a lot, we have basically $2.5 million in inter-fund loans right now. But in the grand scheme of things, the audit is more accurate from a longer-term perspective, because all those inter-fund loans will be paid back, we just don't know. So I just wanted to see both of those, because if you were looking and comparing them, that's like the single biggest significant differentiation.
Yeah, can you just give me, I want to understand it better. When you, can you give me an example of an inter-fund loan that the city has?
Yes, basically anytime, so there have been many, 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 obviously because we're over $2 million. You will get a resolution that says this authorizes the general fund to loan, let's say, the sidewalk improvement, so a half a million dollars. So until the sidewalk improvement.
So always, yeah, I figured, so all these resolutions, we see that.
Yeah, that, that's what they all are, they all get approved by resolution. And they all, you know, in theory, they will all get paid back, it's just a question of when. I mean, the sidewalk improvement district, you know, should have been paid back last year if everything started on time. Now it's not going to be paid back until probably 2026 and 2027, because they're not going to be able to afford to pay back the whole loan with the money that they get in 2026 alone. So.
I see.
But also basically, almost every capital project that they undertake, there's some inter-fund loan too. And it's a good thing to accept that we can do it, because obviously, we're not borrowing that money, even if it's for short-term requirements, so we're not paying interest on it. So to the extent the general fund has the ability to do that, it's the most financially beneficial option. I will say that we are getting to the point now to see, because we have so many capital projects, and some of them are so slow in reimbursement, that we're getting to the point where at some point we're going to be of this, we're going to have to say, general fund can't loan it, we're going to have to borrow short-term. But, you know, that's all going to be dependent on how we get the projects done, and we get them reimbursed. A fair amount of it should hopefully be, I don't think we're going to get to the point where we're not going to be able to do inter-fund loans, because two of the bigger projects, being Ferry Street Bridge and DRI things, they're both, like there's, you know, an end in sight for both of those.
And our credit history were A, like we're, we have very good, the city has it, but it stays A?
Yep, yep, it's not a problem yet.
Thank you.
So if you want to switch to the next page, probably might want to take a look at this, and we can discuss it in greater detail. I did go back and I just looked at the fund balance and how it's changed from 2016 to 2023. So you can see the net change in fund balance from year to year is the first column. And what you can see is 2017, we actually, fund balance went down, but that wasn't because we didn't make the money, it's because when we create a capital reserve, it sits in the general fund, but when we say, okay, now we're ready to start that capital project, we take the money out of the general fund and it goes into the capital fund, so it's recorded in a completely different fund. So it looks like it's coming down, but in fact, we took $600,000 that we had set aside for the Ferry Street Bridge as a reserve, and that's a technical legal reserve that the council would have to vote on and pass. So that's what that downfall was. And then you can see basically, the next time that we had a significant, it was COVID. You know, surprise, they are, we knew that we took significant rounding hit there. And then you can see in 2021 and 2022, we have pretty nice increases in fund balance, which makes that 16,000 really stand out. So just a little bit of insight there, I wanted to know for myself, so I could give you one or two. Rest of it, we can pretty much go through. We're in the middle of budget, as you all know, because we're going to be either ditching the meetings or potentially rescinding your own budgets. We've been through all the departments, not that they're done yet. And we've been through basically all the other expenditures, including benefits, debt service, and the other non-departmental things, so we've had a first cut on all of those. Our next meeting is going to be revenue.
Is that tomorrow?
That's tomorrow. I'm hoping I will have the entire revenue protection, my estimate of it done by then, I may not, but I'm going to try my best. The rest is just operational stuff, there's really nothing new there. Yeah, and the rest of it, the rest of it's all just standard stuff. So I did add three pages from the 2023 audit, just so you have it. The first page shows the balance sheets, and breaks out for the general fund, the capital fund, the water fund. And the water fund is new, that is considered one that has to be broken out. It used to always be in non-major, which is basically a summary of all the non-major funds. But they made an accounting change in terms of how leases have to be reported, and since we have the Colorado lease, which is, you know, several, a couple million dollars. That was the one thing that triggered it to now having its own standalone water fund reporting in the audit. ACHPAs have to be reported, because it's a, you know, it's an agency thing. And the non-major funds in this case would be cemetery sewer perpetual care, which is the cemetery savings fund, for lack of a better term, and a couple other things. And then the next sheet is the same breakouts, but it's the income statement. So your revenues and your expenses, you can see this is where the first column is where I pulled what I recorded on the earlier page. And that shows you right down there at the $16,000 for that. And then the third sheet is basically just the general fund, and it just shows original budget, final budget, and actuals. So you can see how we did compare it against budgets. I will point out that the difference between the final budget and the actuals is pretty significant. That is because, you know, we have all of these different programs through Boa C for, so we have the CHIPS, right, with this highway improvements, so six streets, they've got STR, which is not short-term rental, but state touring routes, then there's some minor ones like Pave New York and Extreme Weather, and then there's like one other one, there's the old pot holes, pay pot, pave our pot holes. So those are all basically New York State programs. We put a generic amount in the budget every year, it's a complete offset. The revenues from the programs are offset by proposed expenditures. Rob will get something in generally March or April of every year, where the state says, here's what your allocation really is, and we go, we amend the budget. But he does not, he traditionally does not use those funds every year. He tries to like build them up and like do a bigger project every two years for efficiency. So in this case, we had about $1 million of those various programs that ended up not happening. So that's why, but you see, the revenues and expenditures are very close, and budgeting is very close. It's just that extra, you know, couple million dollars. We neither incurred the expense, nor did we get the revenues, since we didn't incur the expense. So that's why you're seeing such a dramatic difference there. That's, oh my God, I'm trying to speed it there.
Oh my gosh.
Thank you, thank you very much. Questions?
Catskill is Green County, right? Catskill is Green County. And so one of the things, I think, when you look at the sales tax numbers here, where green has done very well, that there does appear to be a certain amount of activity that would ordinarily, in the past, would have been Hudson activity, that's now going to Catskill, becomes a lodging and support. And that might be part of.
Because they're building more hotels upstairs.
There might be more R and B's.
Right, the short-term rental numbers is. Wasn't there, there was a question last month about the number of short-term rentals that have like a.
Exemption?
Exemption period, which is up soon?
Yes.
Is that up, when is that up?
I can't say precisely, I know it's by the end of this year.
And what, and how, do you know about, about how many?
I don't, I think there's only like between six and eight operators that have multiple units. I think the one who's, there's one guy that's got what, five or six properties alone? So I don't know how many rooms that is, but it's probably 30 or 40. I'm not sure he resides in any of them, so they'll probably be, they're all of them on the market, or deciding something to do, something to do with them. So it's not a lot of people, but there's a decent amount of properties associated with them.
And are we looking at a general decrease or more or less the same then? In terms of lodging tax, or?
Lodging tax, we were almost exactly even year to, I don't know for year to date for that one too, so we're at 301 right now, that's through September. We were at 307 through September last year, so pretty constant. Possibly slightly concerning though, because when, at 307 last year through September, we ended up at 528. But our 2024 budget was 632, so.
So we're looking at potentially less?
We're looking at potentially less. And I mean, you know, obviously some of that was not knowing we were going to end up in 2023, and then some of it was also having ring on the short-term compliance person. There was a hope that that was, you know, obviously required people to engage more and register. That really has, that really only has started to take place about now. I mean, they just issued the first sort of warning letters in September, I think. So we're not, whatever impact that's going to have, we're not really seeing it year-to-date yet. So there's still that opportunity.
Right, and the cost for enforcement then is what, do we know? The enforcement of the lodging tax?
The cost of it? I mean, there's a part-time.
There's a part-time.
Person, yeah.
Fair enough.
That's pretty much it. Well, you know, I've been working with them, Andy's been working with them, and we're going to put the notices together and get them out, things like that. So there's those, you know, hidden costs, but they're not direct costs. I think the question's going to be if we find one or more person that's egregiously out of. That's what I'm looking for. Egregiously out of compliance, there, there will be a question as to whether or not we, how aggressively we want to go against them, and how far back we might want to go against them. And that obviously would incur some legal costs, but presumably, we wouldn't make a decision to do it unless we thought that the benefit would outweigh the expenditures. And I'm sure there are some people out there for sure that, that might fall into that category. From the little feedback I've gotten, it sounds like a lot of them are more just sort of like, I forgot, or I didn't know, I have to do it again this year, or, you know, so they're trying to, they're trying to work very positively with the people to get them back into the fold at this point. The question is, once they do all the nice, nice, is there anybody left to be less nice to?
Is lodging tax higher or lower from COVID, before COVID?
Higher.
So we're, we're doing better in that, in the lodging tax?
Yeah, yeah.
By how much?
I don't know off the top of my head, I know it dropped pretty substantially during COVID. I want to say before COVID, I don't think we ever hit north of 400K before COVID. And like last year, we were at 528, so it's been, COVID definitely hit a slump, but it's been continuing to grow. But it is, it, like I said, it does seem to be leveling out now. But they'll all have to be better, extra 1%.
Nice, we'll bring them back, good money.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No, thank you very much. This is great, thank you. And the, the revenue meeting is tomorrow then at 2:30. Okay, all right, next up on the agenda, parking committee.
All right, so as everybody knows, we are purchasing new hardware and software. We're in the process of doing that right now. The part of this that we need your help with, or we'd like your input on, is what the pricing should be, because we are going to be changing all of the pricing for all of the short-term municipal lots, the long-term municipal lot, and all of the non-street. So at, at the beginning of the year, in January, the situation at the long-term parking at Front Street was that there were 171 numbered spots, meaning those people paid daily. There were 72 reserved spots, those were for permitted people. But the permits we oversold, so there were 99 permits out there and only 72 spots. This created some issues, so people were getting tickets and coming in and screaming. And I'm sure the reasons behind that is that you don't want a reserved spot left empty. For example, I went down today just to take a look, I do that periodically, I just drive around down there just to see, all of the numbered spots were taken today, and there were 11 reserved spots. So the payment situation was Park Mobile, which was a kiosk and an app. The app had cost issues too, because if you were, say, overseas or something, and you couldn't get the app to respond until the next day, you were given a ticket. That won't happen now, because it's going to be a text-to-pay situation. The reasons for having permits in the first place are convenience and price reduction. Both of those things can happen, because all of this will be, be done through plate numbers. And we've been told that we can essentially program this any way we want. So we could have a daily, a weekly, a monthly, or a quarterly payment system. And what I have suggested, or what we discussed last month, and what we'd like your input on is, how much should daily, weekly, monthly, or quarterly be? And I came up with something because I was looking at what Poughkeepsie has done and what Albany has done. Poughkeepsie obviously gets state federal money, and they have a giant parking garage that I'm sure was funded, because they are part of Metro Worth, and it's, so it's a much bigger thing, it's not a privately owned company like Inta. Anyway, my suggestion was $9 daily, 55 weekly, monthly, 225. And if you're paying quarterly, that's the biggest discount, would be 650. So that would be for the year, $2,600 a year.
And what is it now?
Well, now, the, the permitting was $1,000 per year. So we were losing almost a quarter of a million dollars a year.
Okay, so it was $1,000 a year, you're looking to make it 26.
Yeah, so that would be on par, or yeah, that would be on par with what rents litter stations.
Which is about 2,600 a year.
I misunderstood in numbers, so I heard nine for daily, 55 for weekly, but then I thought I heard 225 for monthly. For monthly, I didn't say, okay.
And then.
That's 650 and then 2,600.
So, you know, the longer you stay, the lesser pain. I don't know, what do you?
Well, the figures to me, they seem good.
What I've worked out potential loss, so we're, we are at $10 a day now, I'm saying, let's bring it down to nine. That brings it more in line with what we'd like to do with Warren Street, which would be a dollar an hour.
Yeah, I mean, so they're all going to, because somewhere, we received the email, you know, this group complaining. I just want to make it clear, all the rates are going up. We're not just attacking the Amtrak station, the, you know, the street, the whole Warren is going to go up. I think, I think, to me, those figures seem reasonable, but once we have the parking coordinator, I think we should give them the task to have as small of amount of permits. I know, we don't want to go back to it, but because.
I think you're creating bureaucracy that way, when you, it's already built into. I think you're creating bureaucracy that way when you, it's already built into the system. You can choose, hey, I want to pay quarterly, so I'm going to do three months at a time. You don't have to come here, get a physical tag, and then go down there. Like that, that creates problems for them in the office.
Yeah, I understand. What I'm trying to say is we have hope. I wanted to have, I was thinking if we have, as I say, forty spaces that they're prepaid and they're non-refundable. You have some kind of big issue, for example, COVID, flu, something like that, and then people don't commute. We're going to be having, it's like a county's vehicles, you're having money coming in, no matter what, you're not returning that money. So the city is making some money.
Vicky, if all of those spots were given up for people who traveled every single day, that lot would be full. I, I bet you, just from what I've seen going down there for the last few weeks and checking.
No, I understand, during COVID was not, during COVID was empty, and I know that. Well, I'm just saying, sometimes things happen.
Right, but I don't think that, I think you're creating, again, I'll just repeat it. I think you're creating bureaucracy when it's built into the system that we are, we are able to create on our own, you know, that they can do whatever they want.
I understand. I don't want to make it more complicated, but I'm saying if, once we have somebody that's an expert on this, and it doesn't hurt bringing up the conversation, seeing if it makes any, any difference, really.
We, we have experts now. They, they sit in this office all day and deal with it. I think we should ask the people who have been working on this every day for, I don't know, the last ten years of their lives. They're really frustrated. So I think getting their opinion would be good. And especially if, if something is giving us the technology to just do away with part of their job. I think that's kind of what. Yeah.
Given in essence, signing up for a quarterly rate, that is the equivalent of a permit.
It is. That's exactly what it is. And that's what I.
Not the yearly though, I mean, we're talking about the yearly.
I mean, that's the way a lot of people do their taxes, you know?
I'm just saying during COVID, there were two years people were not commuting. People moved up here, so the city would have lost so much money.
And all of those people are now commuting.
I know, but we don't, I just don't know. I, I'm just throwing it out there.
I just have a question on the rates that you put, because I've got it, that's the purpose of the conversation we just committed is to talk about the rate. So there's really hardly any advantage or discount from, you know, weekly, if you do four weeks, it's two hundred and ten per month. So it's a very small.
It's a small, but there is something there.
So if you did it weekly, you'd be paying two hundred and ten, but it's two twenty-five, you buy, do it by month, depending on the month, you may better off than weekly. And then if you take the two twenty-five times three, you're at six seventy-five versus six fifty. And that, that, that's not time to me to be very good.
Also because people weekly are only going to do Monday through Friday, so that's only going to be five days, so nine times four. You know, is, is, why do a weekly rate which is fifty-five, I don't know, someone's going to take that. Because they're only going to do five days maximum. Even in Poughkeepsie gives you weekends free for.
Okay, we aren't this.
I know.
We can't.
I think we need to incentivize it so people use, it is better, the prepaying is a better method for finance.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't prepay this.
No, no, I'm saying something to give incentive for people to buy.
If you were to say five hundred for a quarter, then you have my attention. But six fifty for a quarter, you don't have my attention.
Okay, well, think about the potential losses, okay? So I'll, I'll tell you what they are.
What do you mean by losses?
So if you fill that parking lot, okay, with ten dollars a day, and I, we're taking it down to nine, by whatever, I read here, because rentalier is eight. And we're at ten. There's only so many parking spaces. If you're, if you're signing up for a week or, you know, a year, and you're, you're, and you have a reserved parking spot for a year, that is going to sit empty whenever you're not there. People can't use them spots. That's what I'm seeing right now. Like when I go down and look, there are only so many spots. Every single spot is taken up except for the reserved spots. I'm not kidding.
Right, so you're going from a reserved spot system to a permit system.
To a, to, everybody signs up, you get there, when you get there, if there's a spot for you, there's a spot.
And you're only selling the same number of permits as there are spots, and that's it.
Exactly.
And the system is smart enough to know that we have two hundred and fifty spots.
No, it's, you're, you're doing luck of the draw.
I don't. No, 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 that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking from, from a reservation standpoint, is the system, I assume the system has to be smart enough to say, we've got two hundred and fifty spots down there. We have sold X amount of weekly, X amount of monthly, X amount of quarterly, that totals one hundred and eighty spots. So they know that only seventy people can buy the remaining available slots.
I would have to talk to the board member about that, but I don't think that that's going to be possible.
Then how would that get tracked? What, is that people going to buy a day permit to get there and having those spots open at all?
Well, then you, you would go there first to make sure that you're, you have a spot. And then you go to the kiosk and you scan the thing and you do the text-to-pay.
But if you have a quarterly spot and then, fine, so let's say I bought quarterly, great. So now other people have bought other spots, but I'm expecting.
This is the problem. We don't have enough parking for everyone who wants to be in that lot.
Okay, so we're still going to have a problem.
Yes, we're always going to have a problem. Unless we build a parking garage somehow.
So the system is.
Maybe Amtrak could get involved since obviously those people are taking Amtrak.
I mean, I will say we, and I'm happy to be part of this conversation if we helpful too, but this issue of not available spaces, because here's the problem, Rich has bought a quarterly pass. I get there five minutes before him, there's an empty spot, I park there, I buy it.
Well, that's, I did say that in my notes. I said, maybe we should have some reserved that's a monthly only. But people are still going to park there. And that's what was happening when, you know, all the reserved spots were taken up, then the reserved people were parking in the numbered spots.
I mean, the system's going to have to be smart enough to stop the number of sales when the number of spots, I mean, are, are taken every year.
But then what if they don't show up and then spots are empty?
You know what, what I, I think is going to be a big, what I see, it's going to be a huge mess. Because the way the permits, they were going there and they couldn't find any spots. Now we're going to have the same thing where the passes, the quarterly and the weekly, they're going to be worth it. I think the best thing to do is not have any pass, just to have a day, I'm sorry. Because now in the beginning, we may have to do this, because the, the weekly are going to go, there will be, where is my spot? I paid for it.
Yeah, I have to agree.
I think just daily then.
I think.
You know, we also, yeah, I mean, yes, that makes more sense, because otherwise we're going to run into the same problem.
Oh my God.
If you oversell.
And there's no real financial benefit to buying quarterly anyway.
Yeah, and we're not getting a parking around our own house, so that's a nice idea, but good luck with that one. Yeah, I mean.
We got, we got to be creative around this because honestly.
It's all you.
Honestly, we don't, no, we don't count parking. And then I drove, then I drove up Allen, because that's the street that goes up. You know, I, I drove up Allen, that's the closest street. And guess what? That whole first block was taken up.
We're going to see that, people are just going to park around people's houses.
Okay, I think, let's just go back. I think we should stay to the daily, have the rate, I think nine or ten dollars. I mean, I don't know why it's not.
Well, and.
Can we round it up?
To ten, it's ten now.
No, why the one hundred and ten? Let's end it at ten, nine is a tough. Yeah, it's better for health, right? I'm moving on. I think we should do ten, and I think, yes.
Let's just talk. All right, so it's day ten, and it's, how much people complain or what they're saying. And they were permitted and they were paying two dollars and seventy-five cents a day, and now they're going to pay ten. I was trying to cut them a break.
Are these parking meters just going to be down by the train station?
It's not a meter.
On the kiosk, kiosk will be down by the train station. All over, and this parking lot here too.
We're getting rid of all of the.
All the meters. I really don't think it makes a difference, the nine of them.
All right, so this is the finance committee. Hold on, hold on, Paul.
No, we have five minutes.
We have five minutes.
Oh, I jumped in, I can read it.
One other question, finance committee. What do you think about a dollar an hour for parking on Warren? What do, what do you think about the, the short-term lots, which also sell permits?
What are the shorts term, what do you mean?
They are municipal, they're municipal slots.
Private.
No, they're the city hours, and there are currently six, but maybe we're going to make seven because we're going to try to make another one.
Okay, they, the municipal, other municipal lots you're talking about in Columbia Street.
Yeah, Columbia Union, two on Warren, Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, let me just tell you guys my opinion about this. I go often and I check those spots and I see that there are a lot of them, they're not used as much. And I would like us to do this a little bit in status, not overwhelm the public here. I mean, because this is a lot, you know? And I feel we should probably.
We are going in stages, there's three stages, three phases.
No, I know. What I'm trying to say is that short-term, we should start in the new year to.
We need to stop selling permits in those lots if that's what we decide to do. Right now, we are losing so much money by selling permits to those lots. And it's.
Where was it over?
Well, they're two hundred and fifty dollars per year.
They're two hundred and fifty dollars and they're prorated.
I also haven't seen, I mean, I know this thing came up where supposedly some people who are buying the thousand-dollar permits are now buying.
They're trying to.
Which is absolutely what I would have done as well. I, I did.
That's what short-term.
I understand, but I haven't seen, I couldn't find anything in the charter or the code that expressly said that those were short-term parking.
We need to do that too sweet, because it's not.
So then the question is, why should they be short-term instead of long-term? And that's, that's absolutely.
Because, because they should be for, the long-term's for people who are commuting. That, that, again, short-term for, for people who are coming in to shop.
On Water Street, there's nowhere to park, there's nowhere to park on Water Street. The weekend is back to back, and we need to advertise it better, so people go there, on Columbia, they can park. It's usually empty. We need short-term definitely to be advertised and used better.
There are two, two kind of permit things without permits, like permit, permit alternatives that I'd like to suggest, three actually. So one for people with disabilities, two for people who are over sixty-five, and three for people who are in construction or have heavy equipment that they need to park in front of somebody's house for more than two hours.
I don't know people who are Irish.
You and I, maybe.
No, 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 no. I mean, the, the one thing I would say about the short-term lots, two things I would say is, one, that needs to be certified, because right now I don't see anything that says in writing that those lots are. The other thing is that I do know that, I completely agree with you, people coming to restaurants, whatever. I do know that people also buy those permits because they don't have enough parking for their own home.
Yeah.
So I think that's probably where the permits came from to start with.
Since if you're a resident.
So we have to ask her, I don't.
What does short-term mean?
It's daily.
So no overnight?
No.
But there's plenty of overnight parking in those lots.
They can park there.
But I thought you could park in those lots overnight?
Currently, you can.
Yeah, I think we, we need to think about this.
In what sense, the short-term, if I can park there overnight?
It's not supposed to be, the way that it's been explained to me over and over again by everyone who's worked with parking is that those are short-term lots. They were always thought of as short-term lots, they were for residents, they weren't for, you know, I'm just going to drop off my car because I feel like it, or.
We need to help the residents and they're, they're, it would be nice if they get utilized. Now, for overnight, I want, if we are having a problem, like I know Depot District is going up, there's going to be a lot more development, people will have a hard time finding space overnight. So that's something we have to look down the road, the council. But right now, I feel we only have one split second, so I think that's.
I need to have the county involved in this conversation too.
Yes, it's. They get three permits.
Okay, but the county has tons of parking within the city of Hudson.
Yes, they do.
And, you know, and, right, right. And they have their own seal and parcel, which they park on the whole side. But the thing is that the city residents, right behind my house, are not allowed to park on, you know, those county lots. And there's, there's tons of parking on Columbia between third and fourth, there's tons of it.
So that may have to change.
That has to change. And, you know, we had talks with the county, they're like, people can, why can't residents park there overnight?
Right.
It's always empty. There's like four days.
And we do give the permits to. We do give, anybody that is a county employee can get a free permit to any lot in, in the city of Hudson. I don't know. It's been going on since nineteen ninety-seven.
We got to get our lot back to start with, then we got to start charging them. But.
Let's just find out if that is true for sure, because we need to confirm everything and then start there.
Okay, this is a, this is an agenda item for the parking committee, it starts now.
Yeah.